Bob Kuyak in over there. Good evening, everyone. All right, well, I try to call the Wednesday, April the 4th, Dr. Cog Board Work Session to order. The normal chairman has scouted on work basis to another state, so he's not here. At this point, Ms. Garcia, would you take the role, please?
Eva Henry, Steve Odoricio, Jeff Baker, Bill Holan, Elise Jones, Deb Gardner, David Beacom, Randy Wheelock, Sean Wood, Chrissy Fanginello, Anthony Graves, Kevin Flynn, Roger Partridge, Ron Engels, Libby Zabo, Tina Francone, Bob Pfeifer, John Marriott, Bob Roth, Larry Videm, David Spellman, Aaron Brockett, Ann Justin, Lynn Baca, Matt Johnston, Roger Hudson, Ben Price, George Teal, Jason Bauer, Tammy Mauer, Catherine Hyder, Laura Christman, Richard Champion, Gail Christie, Rick Teeter, Debbie Nasta, Catherine Whitman, Steve Conklin, Linda Olson, Jeff Deacon, Mark Gruber, Daniel Dick, Drew Peterson, Bobby Sindelar, Lisa Jones, Laura Brown, Lynette Kelsey, Henry Ergot, Scott Norquist, Storm Glor, Jim Dale, Ron Rakowski, George Lance, Mike Hellman, Stephanie Walton, Dana Gutwin, Jacob LeBure, Jerry Bean, Isaac Levy, Karina Elrod, Kyle Schlachter, Jacob Lofgren, Larry Straub.
Here.
Jacob, is that you on the phone?
Yep.
Okay. Win Sean, Win Shaw, Joan Peck, Ashley Stolzmann, Connie Sullivan, Dan Greenberg, Colleen Whitlow, Joyce Palazuski, Deborah Jerome, Sean Foray, Chris Larson, Jordan Sowers, Julie Mullica, John Dyack, Sally Daigle, Roberta Mooney, Rita Dozel, Jessica Sandgren, Jackie Phillips, Herb Atchison, Bud Starker, Adam Zarin, Deborah Perkins-Smith, Phil Van Meter. Okay.
In the attachments, on Attachment A, you will find a summary of the items that were discussed at the last meeting for your benefit. And then, moving on to the public comment period, the Chair requests there be no public comment on issues for which a public meeting has prior -- prior public meeting has been held before the Board of Directors. Is there anyone here who has any items that they'd like to bring forward for a public comment? You have up to three minutes. Okay, we'll go on to the next one. Next item up, Mr. Papstorf, if you will, please. This will be Attachment B, folks, if you're looking at your packet.
Good afternoon, everybody. The mic on? Good afternoon, I'm Ron Papstorf. I'm the Director of Transportation Planning and Operations here at Dr. Cog. Thank you. For those of you I haven't had a chance to meet yet in this new role, I'm about two and a half weeks into the position, trying very desperately hard to fill very large shoes left by our friend Doug Rex.
That's an indication he has big feet.
So, this first item, you'll remember that back on March 21st of the Dr. Cog Board, we discussed the regional share evaluation criteria. Would like to thank you and your staff for getting us to this point. We've made a lot of progress on getting to this point, on establishing the criteria for the regional share of this next TIP cycle. Again, that represents about 20 percent of the total that will be available this next TIP cycle. Based on your input, we believe we're ready to move the regional share criteria through the final approval process and prepare for the regional call for projects later this summer. As an outcome of the discussion back on March 21st, we heard some feedback about a couple of items. We subsequently went back to the TIP Policy Work Group to talk about the issue of exploring increasing the weighting factor beyond 20 percent for Part II, and that's the consistency and contributions to the transportation-focused MetroVision objectives. The TIP Policy Work Group met on March 26th. They discussed that item of weighting, but also a couple of other minor adjustments as well that are reflected in the final draft review criteria that was in your packet. As far as the weighting criteria, I think the TIP Policy Work Group really kind of felt like the weighting was correct at that point for that section of the criteria. And the reasoning went along the lines that while that's 20 percent of the total criteria, when you combine that with the proposed weighting for the TIP focus areas and the MetroVision objectives are combined, that really totals 50 percent of the total scoring for the regional share criteria. So, the TIP Policy Work Group felt like that was meeting the objective of making sure that the real focus of the regional projects would be on implementing the MetroVision criteria. In addition to that, the Policy Work Group agreed that applicants should be requested to list out each funding partner when they're talking about the partnerships, their contribution amount, and the percent of the overall total of the project cost. They also talked about, they recommended listing partnerships as examples to emphasize and strengthen the collaboration and cooperation for projects. And then, finally, to expand the section title of Part IIb to expand, to emphasize the connection to MetroVision of those TIP focus areas and really clearly tie that back to MetroVision. With that discussion, I'd entertain any questions or comments you have tonight. Our intent is to finalize this and bring it forward through the approval process at the April 18th Board Meeting for Action.
Any comments or questions from any of the Directors? Mr. Brockett.
Thank you for that. So, I was one of the ones who raised the question about the percent that is assigned to the MetroVision objectives and the weighting criteria. And I appreciate the TIP Policy Working Group's point about the adding up 50 percent between the focus areas and the MetroVision objectives. But I feel like, and I think that's a good point, but I feel like, you know, the focus areas are what we're focusing on in these next few years, but the MetroVision objectives are what we're focusing on for the long term, for decades. And it seems to me like we'd be better off switching the weighting between those two so that we could do 20 percent on the focus areas, which are for this section, and 30 percent on our long-term MetroVision objectives. So, I'd like to put that out there as a suggestion.
Comments or questions from the body? Any response from staff on the Mr. Brockett's comments? Mr. Rex or Mr. Pop? Okay, hang on just a second, Elise. Any comment of either one of you? You can toss a coin if you want.
Everybody's very excited about this, I can tell.
Well, I think the only comment I'd make, you know, is that, you know, as is indicated, I mean, the focus areas are MetroVision objectives, and it is those MetroVision objectives that the Board wanted to focus on. So, I think that's why they were weighted heavier than the other focus area, or the other MetroVision objectives. I mean, ultimately, it's your decision, of course, but I mean, I think that was the reasoning behind it, because they were ones that we chose as focus.
Mr. Brockett, do you want to continue with the conversation?
Well, I guess maybe if we can get more information about how projects would be judged on both the focus areas and the objectives, so like if they would be, if it really is just objectives that we're pulling out and we would be valuing the same way we would other MetroVision objectives, that's more compelling. So, if we could learn more about how those would be applied, that would be helpful.
Ms. Jones.
Well, I actually like Director Brockett's idea, and I was wondering, as I was reading the packet today, the MetroVision actually has performance targets. And that's, I think we want to continue to be data-driven and get the biggest bang for our buck. And so, having actual measurements for whether or not something is moving our MetroVision forward, the MetroVision piece actually has metrics that are measurable and that you can tag your quantitative data to. And so, I agree that if I were gonna choose to favor one block over the other, the MetroVision would be, I think we're, we'd put a few more, the percentage points at a minimum, match them.
Ms. Walton.
I would agree with the weighting suggestion, and I prefer to be a little more data-driven as well. My impression, as we were talking about the TIP focus areas, is that they were a bit of, I don't know, for lack of a better word, kind of bonus points or icing on the cake, that it was sort of the thing that would maybe push a project over versus being the meat of it. So, I would agree with maybe weighting it as you're suggesting.
Ms. Shaw.
Thank you. I actually think that the weighting as we have it might work better because it allows us each TIP cycle to look at the priorities that we see that are happening, excuse me, today, as opposed to, you know, the overarching, which are always going to be there and are certainly important, including, you know, the measurements, the air quality, all of that. But if we see priorities, this is our real only way for putting the focus on, say, safety and reliability of the transportation as opposed to simply moving traffic, which may or may not have specifically to do with safety or reliability. So, I'd like to see it stay the way we have it.
Mr. Conklin, I'm not sure if I saw your hand or just a head nod.
Kind of both. I think I would advocate keeping it as is as well. This body at the Board Workshop that we had last summer set those focus areas, and I think we did that for a reason. And I think they stand out being weighted somewhat higher, whereas they become tertiary or secondary if they drop below the other. And again, both of them are tied into MetroVision, but the focus areas that this group designated, I think deserve that higher recognition.
Mr. Dyack.
Me? I don't think I raised my hand, but I'll talk.
Connie said you raised your hand. You raised your hand, brother.
Colleen lost, Connie. I'm sorry. To be the bearer of bad news, but...
Mr. Roth.
No, no, I'll talk.
Now you want to talk.
I'll talk. If pressed, I will make this happen. So, to me, the MetroVision objectives, we have Objective 2, 3, where's 1, we have 6A. So, you know, I think our conversation that we had on the focus areas was that we're probably not gonna, a regional project's probably not gonna address all three. We would strongly hope that they would get 1, if not 2, but all 3 might be something that may or may not happen. And we did talk about it. So, I'm okay with the higher weighting, but still, the MetroVision objectives, I would probably need some direction as to, did we talk about these? And did we sort of say, these are the specific ones? If so, should we rank them? Should we have further discussion? And I don't know where these sort of came from relative to the ones we discussed with the higher weighting, so...
Mr. Rex.
I think I understand the question. Well, they're within MetroVision. These are the transportation-related...
But there are other objectives within MetroVision. And to me, why are these in this? Did the TIP Work Group sort of vet this out?
They did.
And they're the ones recommending that these are the only ones that we should take a look at?
These were the, right, these were the ones that we believe were related to the transportation function that should be included, yeah.
So, with that being said, I'm happy to accept that. I think the Board talked about the TIP focus areas. I'm happy to accept these. The weightings, I'm sure, was discussed. I'm happy to accept that as well.
Mr. Roth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Shaw actually must have read my notes, so I'm not gonna be redundant other than to say that I support the recommendations of the TIP Working Group as well.
Ms. Dozel.
I support the way it is here because of, speaking from a small town, we will be focused on the 2B areas, and they will carry more weight for us as a small community than 2C, which is basically focused on urban and keeping residential and urban. And I know we're all kind of connected, and even in Superior, we're considered urban, but for us, when we look at projects from a Superior's point of view, we're going to want to have our projects, not want, our projects will be more focused and more impacted by 2B, and therefore, I'd like the weighting to be higher in 2B than 2C.
Any other comments from any members of the Authority? I have two recommendations. One is basically to modify the scoring capabilities as defined in that particular section. And I also have one that says, leave it the way it is currently recommended in the staff package. And we don't typically vote, but in order to move this forward, since this is scheduled for the next Board Meeting, which they both will be taking, how many are in favor of changing the evaluation criteria prior to moving it forward to the Board? Please do that by show of hands. I know I've got at least two, three, four. One, two, three, four. Okay, I have four. Those in favor of leaving it as a staff recommendation to move forward to the Board, please raise your hand. Okay, we'll move it forward as a staff recommendation. Is there any other comments before we close this item? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Mr. Papstorf, thank you very much. You may now move on to Item C.
All right, good afternoon again. I thought that would be the easier one. Appreciate all the comments on the criteria. We did want to have this conversation about, then, based on the criteria and as applications come in, the actual, how will we review the regional share applications? The TIP Policy Work Group discussed this at their March 26th meeting as well. We've put this proposed process together based on that discussion and on previous Board input throughout this process. First and foremost, I want to say that kind of our overarching construct is that we want to make sure whatever process we come up with for reviewing the regional share applications, that it's as impartial as possible, that it's authentic, that it's objective, and it has integrity for the process so that as recommendations come forward through the review and approval process, that you have confidence in the process that led to those recommendations. To that end, based on, again, that conversation at the TIP Policy Work Group and a staff discussion, we came up with this idea for the review and approval process for the regional share application projects. The review process really consists of sort of an eligibility review, an initial scoring process, review and recommendations, and then working through the approval process. So, I'm not gonna ask you to look at that in a lot of detail because I'm gonna jump ahead and try to talk through each of those sections separately. So, first, on the applications as they come in, the regional share applications are submitted by each of the subregions, by CDOT and by RTD. Those will come into Dr. Cog. Dr. Cog staff will do an initial eligibility review to make sure that each application actually meets the eligibility criteria for those regional share projects. We envision a sort of parallel scoring process where a review panel will score the regional significance section of the project applications, and Dr. Cog staff would score the focus areas, the MetroVision objectives, and the leveraging sections of the regional share criteria. The next step would be that we would, the scores would be combined, presented to that review panel. The review panel would discuss the projects and the scoring and identify a top tier of projects based on the criteria that you all will have adopted. The project sponsors for those top-tier projects would be invited to present to the review panel their projects. And then, the review panel would prepare a recommendation that would go to the Transportation Advisory Committee for their consideration, and ultimately, through the approval process, review process and approval process through the Regional Transportation Committee and the Board. So, before I move on, are there general questions about this overall structure of the process?
Ms. Smith.
Could you talk a little bit about the review panel? Like, not specific people, but what were your thoughts about that?
That's my next, I'm gonna launch into that. I just want, I wanted, I did want to talk about the process first and see if we're okay generally with the concept of this, of this review process generally before I get into the review panel, because I think that is a significant question.
Everyone okay with this step so far? Okay, all right, go ahead.
Moving on, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, there are a number of different options available to us if we think about this review panel. And the TIP Policy Work Group had a pretty extensive conversation about this issue, and to be honest with you, there are a lot of different ideas. And I think, first and foremost, I would emphasize there's probably no truly right answer here. I think it's what the Board is gonna be comfortable with. And relating back to sort of those objectives for this being kind of objective, authentic, sort of trying to make sure that there aren't a lot of kind of biases in that overall process might help us talk about and decide on sort of the construct of the review panel. So, we talked about sort of using the Transportation Advisory Committee as this review panel. Obviously, there's a lot of pros about that. It's an existing structure that already exists. Everybody's at the table. We can tie that into their meeting schedule. You know, some of the downsides are, a lot of those folks around that table are gonna be project sponsors and project applicants. And so, do you want folks that sort of ultimately have submitted applications, have, will have another bite at the apple in reviewing the recommendation and recommending something up through the approval process to kind of play this central role in this review process? The second option we talked about was the TIP Policy Work Group, kind of a subset of the TAC. Some of the comments that were made at the TIP Policy Work Group was that there's not a lot of small community sort of representation at the TIP Policy Work Group, and kind of has some of the same pros and cons of using the Transportation Advisory Committee. Finally, we talked about the idea of having sort of assembling an ad hoc committee of regional stakeholders. That might be economic development agencies or chambers of commerce from around the region, modal advocates from throughout the state or the region like the Colorado Motor Parries Association, CASTA, Move Colorado, Bicycle Colorado. There are many to choose from involving RAC in that. So, kind of putting together this ad hoc group that's sort of outside of our normal process and might bring some objective, new perspectives to the review of those applications and scoring and developing a recommendation for you all to consider. So, with that, Mr. Chair, I think I put a little bit of enough meat out there for you to chew on a little bit, and would be happy to have a discussion with you about your thoughts on those different options.
Okay, I've got about three or four of you. Hang on just a minute. And just so everyone's aware, this last slide that Ron presented, the Board Officers were looking at this, and we were just trying to brainstorm a little bit. How do you find somebody that has no direct interest or no direct tie to any of the projects? And we're having a tough time coming up with an unbiased potential of, who would this group be? If it's economic development, they're tied to every community. If it's any of the outside groups, they typically have a community tie or a regional tie of some level. Staff is tied to the municipalities or the counties that they represent, as is in the TIP and the TAC. But we were having a tough time finding probably more than two people, if they would even do it. We're not even sure they would be willing to do that, but just trying to identify potential. We're having a tough time from the Board Officers trying to figure something on a stakeholder in a regional area that's not gonna be tied to one of these applications. Mr. Dyack, then Ms. Jones, and then Ms. Dozel.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. My thought at that earlier discussion was to sort of have each subcommittee nominate or appoint one staff member. That way, each subregion would have equal representation. They're more intimately involved, so it would probably be a subset of the TIP Policy Work Group. But they would sort of know the intent. I think they would have a good understanding on how to score this. And ultimately, it's going through three or four different other machinations, and it comes back to the Board. So, at least in this first go-round, I think that's probably something to consider.
Ms. Jones.
Well, I guess referencing my earlier comment, I think this is your opportunity to really bring subject matter expertise that's not sitting around this table now to take a look at this with a fresh set of eyes. And while I think everybody, you know, should be people from the region so that they have some idea of what is regionally significant for the metro area, I think it's possible to at least have them not be employed directly by one of the local governments that's submitting a project, so at least hopefully, they can bring a regional perspective to this. So, well, I think we'd have to do some thinking about who those individuals are. I think, you know, we already know, you know, what our jurisdictions think. We'll have the Dr. Cog staff expertise brought to the table. This is the opportunity to bring outside perspectives on what the rest of the world thinks is regionally significant based on their expertise around transportation and mobility. So, that's where I would lean.
Ms. Dozel.
Well, first of all, it's not a beauty pageant. You know, so we don't need people that are objective, you know, never seen the candidate before and score them based on something, you know, without having prior knowledge of them. I think that this body is meant to actually spend the money in the best way that we can collectively. So, I think that's our requirement. Our commitment is to come together and spend the money the best way we can for the entire Denver regional area, Denver metro regional area. So, I think we should do it, and I like the idea of a person selected from each subregional. That's a good idea. We should be responsible for spending this money well. And I think if we bring other people in that haven't been part of this process, like we have twice a month, or four times a month, or, you know, for four years, or even two months, I don't care how long you've been here, but we've come here with the idea that we want to do the best thing that we can to spend the money. And I think if we bring people in that haven't been seeped in all of this, then what we end up with is a patchwork quilt and not a tapestry. And I think we need to be focused on creating a better tapestry of how we do transportation here. So, I think it's our responsibility to figure this out. And I wouldn't want to put it off on somebody else and then be upset about it. You know, I think let's be upset together and then come together and then work forward together.
Other comments? Ms. Christman.
With a regional stakeholder, I think the key word is stakeholder. I think it's very hard for us to ascertain what someone's interests and conflicts may be. And this is so important to all of us. When we create, whatever group we create that ultimately is members of our own group here, then at least we understand what somebody's biases are. And we know what the conflicts are. And people, you know, if they're voting with a bias or conflict, we can identify that. We can't do that with regional stakeholders.
Other comments? Ms. Peck.
I agree with you. Laura. The other thing, when you're mentioning economic development groups, et cetera, they are going to be influenced by the stakeholders in their town anyway, especially if they don't understand the whole concept of what we're trying to do. They're gonna go to their councils, to their mayors, to their transportation directors to get some kind of an idea of what the city wants or what that region wants. So, rather than trying to engage them and bring them up to speed, I think we go with this body. I thought that was a good idea. So, that's my comment.
Others? Mr. Partridge?
I just make a comment on the, if we get economic development groups in there, because many of these groups, there is a fee to join them. Some jurisdictions may not, but anytime there's a fee, I think now we get a little bit of a problem. I certainly like the idea, I think, about the subregion that has mentioned, I'd like to read his comments. I'd like to read his comments, too. I think we're in the right way. But, just regarding economic development groups, there's a fee involved many times, so that, that challenges us.
Mr. Brockett?
I agree with Director Partridge and other people who've expressed concerns about the regional stakeholder idea. But, I do think, you know, obviously, this will eventually come to us for a decision, but I do think there's a role for technical folks in, in an earlier stage in the process because, to vet the projects. And I know Dr. Cog's staff will be doing the initial scoring, but I think it'd be helpful to have some subject matter expertise in between before it makes its way to this board.
So, let me just make sure that we're still understanding that, that everything that's, if you go back before the review panel, you've had the TAC, the sponsors have been there, the scoring has been done, the TIP Policy Group has looked at it, and you have the staff recommendations. So, you've got your, what I'm going to say, you have your experts have already reviewed these as a part of the review process. So, I think from that standpoint, those groups, but now, not every municipality or county has a person sitting on those groups. So, there's some limitation as to fact, there's not 58 groups represented. But, as Mr. Brockett and Mr. Dyak indicated, final decision comes back here no matter what. So, the question is, has there basically been, what I picked up on is three concepts that you've talked about. One is to do one per region. One is to get a fresh set of eyes from a regional basis. And the third was to stay with the responsibility at the board. Is there another one? Is there any consensus of the three which you would prefer to have, since there's only three that's on the table right now? Ms. Jones?
I guess I'm a little bit confused. The folks that, that were advocating for us deciding, we, we are going to decide. So, for us to make an initial determination of regional significance along with Dr. Cog's staff and then have it come back to us seems redundant. So, it's, I think at a minimum, I hope we're not suggesting that there be another layer where the Dr. Cog Board sits and, and reviews projects for regional significance, then turns around and decides the same thing. That doesn't make sense. So, at a minimum, if, I hope, when people say, keep it with us, that they're talking about TAC or the TIP Working Group. So, just clarification on the folks that have spoken to that.
Ms. Dozel, and then Ms. Walton?
Yes, I was going to ask you to bring up that slide there. So, what are we, we're, we're looking at that review, which box are we trying to fill? Because we've talked about approvals from those three center boxes. But, we're also saying that of those, which-
Go back one.
Yeah, the slide before.
There you go.
There you go.
Did everyone see that? Thank you.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chair, Director Dozel. I, I think the, the concept was that the, the scoring piece, that parallel scoring process, the, the review of the regional significance section of the applications would be done by this review panel. However, that review panel is, is convened.
The red squared box.
Under, the two boxes under the score, underscoring there, right?
The top box underscoring.
And then the, the bottom box underscoring, that would be the-
Okay.
Dr. Cog staff would review the other, the other three criteria sections of the applications, the focus, the TIP focus areas, the metrovision objectives, and the leveraging sections. Those scores that happen in parallel would then be combined and brought to, brought to the review panel. The review panel members could see sort of the combined score and really kind of talk through all aspects of each of the projects, identify a top tier of projects, invite the sponsors of those top tier projects to present to the review panel to help them make a recommendation. The recommendation then would go through the normal approval process through the TAC, through the RTC, and to the board. I'm wondering, Mr. Chair, you know, I'm, I'm hearing a lot of different ideas of maybe there's a combination here for, for constructing the review panel. So, I think if each of the subregions were to sort of appoint a member to the review panel and then understand some of the concerns about sort of the economic development agencies or chambers and sort of the, some of the bias that they might bring, but maybe some of the kind of regional modal kind of interest groups or stakeholders might have a role and give, give you that sort of independent outside viewpoint, maybe less biases about sort of regional choices, but still enough understanding about the transportation needs around the region. And maybe that combined group is then large enough that any inherent biases are sort of diluted a little bit. So, I think the larger the group becomes, the less those individual biases start to matter. And so, maybe there's a little bit of a melding of concepts here.
Let me catch a couple of you up. Rita, are you done?
No, I, I'm, the review panel's up there twice, and that's why I'm sitting there. Or is it the same review panel, but they get involved twice? And see, and that's why I think we're just getting way too complicated here for, for this. And, and then we go over and then the TAC gets involved again, which they might have been part of possibly the review panel, or maybe not, or maybe people from the TAC are on the review panel. I just think this is a very complicated diagram for what we need to do. What we need to do is score them, need to take, have somebody take a look at them, and then recommend them. That's it. But, I think I've got four extra steps here that I don't think we need to have.
Ms. Walton, I got you up next. You're good? Ms. Peck?
Thank you. To address Director Jones' comment about having Dr. Cog review it twice, on all of these subregional groups, is there a Dr. Cog member on each subregional group, at least one? Because that might address both issues. If the person on the subregional group that is put on the panel is actually a Dr. Cog member as well, then that, that would address having the Dr. Cog people do it and, but not involving the whole group twice. Does, am I making sense?
Yeah, trying to, the recommendation to these groups that's going out to the regional, subregional is that-
Right.
The Dr. Cog representation of every subregional member and the regional member, between the county and the municipalities, that that Dr. Cog rep is the one that's in that group.
Right.
So, to your point, if everybody follows that scenario of what's being proposed by Dr. Cog when it goes out to the TIP Working Groups, is that if you follow that, your Cog representative is already on, is already on that group.
On the group, but, but I am suggesting, if we're going to say that the group put somebody on the review panel, could that person not be the Dr. Cog person in the subregional group?
Could be a staff person.
Or a staff person?
Yeah.
A staff person.
Ms. Smith, go ahead.
So, I don't want to go back to the, so let me preface this by saying I don't want to go back to the old way of doing things, but can you refresh my memory as to who actually evaluated the applications in the past?
Staff.
So-
Well, can I say-
Staff did the entire process, and then it came to the TAC, to the TAC, the RTC, and the board.
Correct.
Right? So, in the past, we felt, we may or may not have felt comfortable with staff doing the whole thing and then bringing it forward.
Okay, Ms. Jones?
I guess I want to just bring a dose of reality here. What we're talking about is a regional, a review panel that would look at the regional significance, looking at applications and, and the quantitative data backing the regional significance. And I would suggest, as smart and wonderful as all of this group is, we are not transportation geeks, right? We are not going to want to go dive, do a deep dive into the modeling regarding the numbers around regional significance. So, at a minimum, we're going to want that to be a subject matter expert, at least one of our staff people. And I guess, I, I think that maybe you're headed in the right direction with your hybrid idea of, if there's concern that TAC doesn't have representation from, I think it has from all geographic regions, but maybe not all community sizes, having a staff person from each subregion nominated to a group and then having a couple of subject matter experts with a regional perspective to add to those voices. That would make sense in my mind to have people with technical expertise on what would actually make a difference to mobility in the region. So, again, I, I think we need to remind ourselves that we're not going to want to be the ones doing the quantitative modeling analysis. We're going to want staff to do that and people that have significant backgrounds in that kind of, that quantitative analysis.
Ms. Stolzmann?
Thank you very much. I, I think a lot of these suggestions have merit, and I can support many of them actually. But, I'd like to propose that we ask Dr. Cog's staff to just take over scoring of the entire first section and then pass it to TAC and then RTC, and then it would come to the whole board for discussion. I think the Dr. Cog staff does a nice job of understanding that we come from a lot of different perspectives, and I think they understand what we're talking about when we talk about regional significance, and it's a big task. But, I think that they are up to it to be able to score that appropriately and take all of our different perspectives into account.
Mr. Dyak?
To clarify, the, my, my original thought was to have a, a staff person, a one that has technical expertise, not a Dr. Cog board member, if selected by the subregion, to sit on the review panel. You know, I, I kind of view sort of the Dr. Cog staff and review panel as sort of an assurance type of situation. In the past, I think the past TIP cycle, it, it sort of devolved into more of a confrontational thing between board and staff, or at least it appeared that way to me. I don't, I don't want to be on the opposite side of the table with Dr. Cog's staff. So, to me, to have the review panel would sort of give that, that era of Dr. Cog's staff not telling us which projects they think are appropriate. So, to me, I, you know, I'm, I'm happy to include the review panel with, with the, the subregional staff person. But, again, to Director Stolzmann, if we feel comfortable enough, there's enough, there's enough people and boards along this chain that I feel comfortable just having Dr. Cog's staff score it. But, I think over time, there's going to be questions and concerns. So, to me, I'll put that out there.
Ms. Dozel?
So, back to your idea or your proposal, John, that where you said, a person is selected by each subregion to sit on the review panel. I like that idea. You know, I, I don't want to lose that. I don't think we've lost it here, have we? But, I like that idea, because it's only eight, isn't it? Right?
Yeah.
So, that's not overwhelmingly large committee. I mean, it can be handled and managed, eight people. So, I think the review panel, if we want to just focus in on that, review panel should be a person selected by the, each subregion, and then the appropriate Dr. Cog staff.
Let's, let's make sure, let's say it region, because that includes all the subregions. That way, you'd have eight, if that's what you're talking about, Rita. But, if we go down to the subregion, we've got 58.
Oh, I said subregion for this, subregional is eight. There's eight county, subregional, TIP.
A representative from each subregion.
A representative from each subregional, this process we're talking about. We're creating, we're bringing forth projects for the region, regional projects that are coming out of the subregion, and there's eight of them. So, eight subregions are going to present up to three projects each, and then a member selected by that subregion team will represent their subregion and their projects on this review panel.
Okay, keep in mind, you have to include Dr. Cog, RTD, and CDOT, because they all have consented projects.
Yeah, I, I think I said that. Eight plus the Dr. Cog staff and CDOT and whoever else, RTD.
Okay. Ms. Nguyen?
Thank you. I, I guess I just wanted to, to, to reexamine the scoring and make sure that I'm fully on board with that style of, of review panel, someone from each of the eight groups. But, the way it's depicted here is that that same group would determine regional significance, and Dr. Cog would score on the focus areas, the metrovision objectives, and the leveraging. And I just, so are we okay to, to let Dr. Cog do all of the scoring and then the review panel comes in? I think I'd like that.
Okay, Ms. Smith?
So, I have a question and then may have a comment. So, on the, over to the recommendations, when you have the review panel. So, under that, the tiering presentations, recommendations. So, am I correct in my understanding that coming out of the scoring, that there's a tiering and that only the top tier would give presentations, or are all giving presentations?
Ron? Mr. Chair, yeah, our, our, we envisioned that only those kind of top-tier projects, and they, you know, they might, they might represent 150 to 200% of the total amount available of funding, so that we're really focusing the energy on really honing in on kind of the, the most competitive projects and inviting those project sponsors to, to present those projects to the review panel to help the review panel make their final, final determinations and recommendations to TAC. And the, the whole, the whole point was, the regional share is a, is really a small portion of the total amount in the TIP call, and we, we didn't feel like it was worth the time, that it was effective, to have every project sponsor for all of the regional applications to come in and do a full-blown presentation on the project. Let's focus that effort on sort of the, that top tier of, of projects from, that come out from the scoring.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. So, Ron, kind of piggybacking on that, and I have to agree with some of the previous members that said, boy, this seems like a big process, when you just said to me, it's a small amount of dollars. And so, why have everyone go, go to all this angst? So, I'm just wondering, I'm going back to, which is why I asked the first question, who did it previously? I'm going back to, I wonder what, if the, if Dr. Cog's staff could do the whole thing that says scoring there, and then whatever you want to call whoever makes up that review panel, it's non-Dr. Cog staff. So, there's a chance there for the board to have some input and to do it at, at that point. So, it's just a proposed suggestion. I, I was curious maybe why Doc, so I assume this came forward from Dr. Cog, that staff, that in terms of scoring, there must be a reason that you thought, okay, Dr. Cog's staff could do the technical part, but someone else should do the regional. And I'm just curious what that thought process is, because I would feel comfortable of Dr. Cog doing both pieces.
Sure, Mr. Chair, I, I think the, the idea was that if, based on some previous comments from the board and this interest in sort of having an outside review panel assist in scoring applications, and maybe that was in the context of previous TIPS where we didn't have the regional and subregional share. But, I think the idea was that if you're going to have a review panel that consists of some outside folks, some outside stakeholders, that giving them the, the regionally significant, the regional significance portion of the applications, first, we thought that was an appropriate place for them to start. But, two, that would give them some familiarity with the projects so that when they saw the combined score with the, with the technical aspect, the more technical aspects, the metrovision objectives, the focus areas and leveraging, that then, as they sort of convened and viewed the whole of the projects, they would, they would have gotten some familiarity with the projects and understood sort of how they fit within the region from their review of the regional significance. So, that was, that was kind of the thought process of why we went through that parallel. If we're going to have a review panel, we wanted to set that review panel up the best we could to have it be successful.
So, thank you for that explanation. I would like to propose, you know, something else, if you're making a list, just for consideration, is that the scoring be all done by Dr. Cog's staff and that the review panel be one of these other things. And I'm, I'm not sure that I feel strongly about what is embodied in that review panel yet. I haven't really thought that through, but in my mind, it would be simpler to do that. And I think, Ron, to your point, I understand what you're saying in terms of that group understanding the regional significance. I think that Dr. Cog's staff could really help share their thoughts on that to whoever the review panel is and why they thought, the way they did in terms of the regional significance. So, those are my comments.
Make sure I haven't missed anybody. I've got Mr. Partridge, Mr. Brockett, Ms. Walton, Mr. Conklin, Mr. Graves, and Mr. Ross in the queue so far. So, Mr. Partridge, you're up next.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I like what Deborah was saying there, and I'm just going to back up a little bit to, for a question first. So, under Part Two, which is the applicant, there is a, it's a quantitative, that's a objective number that, that's my question. objective number that, that's my question, it is an objective number that the applicant puts down under Part II?
Go ahead.
So under each question in the Part II, it goes, the B part of each question has a quantitative benefit? Is that a true numerical number?
Ron, you got an answer?
Mr. Chair, Director Partridge, you know, I think it's a combination. And remember, if you'll hearken back to previous conversations that the board has had and the tip policy work group has had about the regional process, we wanted to make it a little bit more qualitative in the review and not all just hard numbers. So it's a bit of a mix, I think, in the way the criteria are structured so that we can consider not only sort of that quantifiable, hard number down to three decimal points, but can also consider some of the qualitative aspects as they relate to the metrovision objectives.
Okay. And then?
Well, I just might follow up on that real quick. And Ron is exactly right, but so, just a, yeah, right. Just a scenario, right? I mean, I think it's one of these, we talked about, you know, using, you know, in context, right? Be able to provide that context that really we haven't been able to do before, right, in the way we scored projects. So for example, in the qualitative portion of, let's say, you know, 2B3, which is the focus area improved transportation safety and security, right? So in your application, when you're submitting a project, you suggest in your qualitative narrative that your project is going to improve safety by X percent. This quantitative benefits section, you would be required to provide that evidence to support that claim. So, and we provide metrics within the worksheets to be able to do that. And then once you provide that evidence, then we will first score those projects individually based on high, medium, low, and then we actually then score those projects in comparison to the other projects by each individual category. So we'll have this huge matrix of, you know, how each project scores relative to each other based on each individual thing.
Okay. And apply the weighting.
And apply the weighting, of course.
And so then, under scoring, is that both quantitative and qualitative by, let's say it's Dr. Cog staff? That's both quantitative and qualitative also?
Yes.
Okay.
The scoring of that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there would be a numerical value assigned ultimately.
So I'm going to kind of wrap it up for me, just thinking, in the application process, each application through the directors and their staff has that opportunity and through, really, the whole sub-region has that opportunity to present qualitative, quantitative. So that's the applicant. I like the idea under scoring that we leave out the review panel, that it just is Dr. Cog staff looking at that as a whole. And then when it moves to review panel, if the review panel is made up of subject matter experts, probably non-directors from each of the sub-region, you have an opportunity to circle back to the application that you put in, but it's already gone through Dr. Cog staff. I like that idea. So I'll just present it, at least in my thinking, that way.
Okay. Mr. Brockett?
Yeah, I was going to say almost exactly the same thing. So, yeah, piggyback on-
You guys work great together.
Absolutely. So, yeah, I think maybe we're headed in a direction that the board could support. And I'll just throw out one additional option. Maybe there's a couple of subject matter experts who are not from the sub-regions, maybe if we have some other ones, maybe a couple others. I'll just leave that maybe to Dr. Cog to think about and maybe bring it back to the full board or not. But it seems like we're moving in a good direction.
Ms. Walton?
I just wanted to ask a clarifying question then. Your suggestion about the review panel, who would be the members of the review panel in your suggestion?
Through the sub-region. Each sub-region comes up with subject matter expert, non-director, is what I'm suggesting. I kind of like Erin's idea that maybe there's a few other subject matter experts that are not staff of each jurisdiction. I kind of like that idea, too. Right.
Thank you. So just to throw out some other things maybe for consideration, I appreciate that we're maybe coming to some consensus, but a couple of things keep popping in my head that I just wanted to mention. One thing that I'm wondering about is the, I'm not as familiar with the Transportation Advisory Committee and I'm wondering, not interested in complicating or drawing out the process anymore because I do agree that with the amount of money, it doesn't need to necessarily be overly complicated. But I'm wondering if there is an opportunity to bring some fresh eyes on some of this at some point and if there are citizen review boards that would be likened to a subject matter expert or is, you know, discussing these topics on a regular basis but that are a little further removed and maybe a little more independent at some point in the process, if that feels like the right thing. So I'm curious about, anybody's thoughts on that? And for including subject matter experts, I'm tending to agree on trusting the staff really to do that scoring and then a different review panel. But I'm wondering if we're missing out on not having Dr. Cog members being witness to some of those presentations. So we'd be, I'm hearing in my ear, they'd be there. But I thought that was, be the review panel.
But they're just, they're not the deciders. They're present.
They're there, though. They'd be part of it. Oh, I see. Okay. So invited to attend, perhaps?
Yeah, we could, I mean, yeah, it's a great point. We could do some kind of joint meeting. I mean, they're all public meetings, of course, anyway, but, you know, we could do some joint meeting of the board and the panel so everybody could hear those presentations.
Good luck with that.
Your worries, not mine.
Mr. Conklin, I'm sorry, Ms. Walton, are you okay if we move on to another comment?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Mr. Conklin?
I heard something that I think probably was unintentional, but I think it, to me, informs my thought about the review panel. And that was, when we were talking about a representative from each of the sub-regions, that they would represent their projects forward. And I think that's, to me, a fatal flaw with that review panel being composed of members of the sub-regions if it is envisioned as advocacy. And if there's in any sense that they are representing their project in that forum, I think that opens it up to who has the loudest voice and the biggest argument and the, you know, all the way down the line. So I would encourage that review panel to be as agnostic as possible in terms of that issue. And if we have members of the sub-region somehow build that so that they are clearly not there to advocate their projects and there to fight the battle for theirs. And I think however we structure it, we need to try to avoid that perception and also that reality.
Mr. Graves?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, this has been really excellent discussion and I think I'm also following into this consensus, one about combining the scoring, leaving that to Dr. Cog staff, then under review, allowing each sub-region designate one staff member, somebody technical gets it. I appreciate the sense of objectivity. I think that's really important. I want to add one additional consideration that actually broadens this process a little bit. One of the things that I've been wrangling with down at the sub-region level is who the designated subject matter experts are, who are sort of monitoring broader opportunity to connect the sub-regions. And so I think it might be great to take a couple of Dr. Cog staff members who are doing the regional scoring bucket and have them attend the regional sub-committee, or regionals, I can't even say, how many regionals? Thank you. The sub-regional meetings to really be a champion for combining projects, elevating projects, right, looking for ways to weave the tapestry that Director Dozel was talking about earlier. And so I think that would be a really nice segue or niche between the two.
So, Mr. Graves, let me ask a clarifying, so I get it right in my own head.
Yes.
The group you're talking about, as I recall, we have Dr. Cog, RTD, CDOT, all on those sub-regional committees already. Are you thinking about a Dr. Cog staff member other than the one that's already at the meeting?
It can very well be potentially the one that's at the meeting, but nobody really has a dedicated purpose of looking for regional connection at the sub-region level. And so I really think it's critically important to have somebody who has that as their orientation, who's attending these sub-regional meetings, who can look for ways to connect the dots.
Okay. Go ahead.
No, I think, I mean, I think it's a great point. You know, we've talked about, at least, I've thrown out the idea of having, good lord, I mean, nobody wants an extra meeting, but the chairpersons of each of those sub-regions that we would meet collectively to have a discussion about the sub-regional issues. But I think what you're speaking to is even taking that really a step further to even invite, you know, adjacent sub-region, maybe as chairs or someone who serves on that committee to be, you know, to be as, I mean, I guess not a formal member of that sub-region, but to be there and available to have the discussion about the integration of possible projects.
Exactly right.
Yeah. Yeah, we can work on that and work some of that language into the tip policy document.
Okay. Mr. Roth?
Two things real quick. The first is I wanted to speak in favor of the idea of having a representative from each sub-region and then a handful of subject matter experts, whoever that is. And then secondly, this may go without saying, but I'll say it anyway, since some municipalities are in multiple sub-regions, it's important that we make sure that no municipality has somebody, multiple people, you know, like, we don't want Westminster to have one on Adams and one on Jefferson, as an example.
Why? I can speak at two meetings.
Actually, we don't want Westminster to be on any of them.
My former chair, buddy.
Ms. Ozell, help you in.
My final comment is, and I know this sounds odd, that is my final comment, but I never intended that the sub-regional representative would only speak and advance their sub-regional project. What I meant is that that person could answer questions about it and how it would connect with others. So once it gets to the review panel, you should kind of throw away ownership and individual agendas and now say, "Okay, what's the good for Denver Regional Metro area? How can we best spend this money collectively together?" So, you know, once you get to here, you shouldn't be talking anymore about your particular town or area, except to answer a question that may be pertinent in the discussion.
You going to figure this out?
Thank you, sir, very much. No, I appreciate that comment. I think you are correct. I will suggest that when Dr. Cog does the scoring, we will not change that scoring. So that scoring that the panel will see will be the same scoring that the board will see. So any additional recommendations or something that comes out of the tip policy, or, sorry, the panel will be in addition to the scoring as originally done by us. So you know what I mean? So that panel will justify their change, if there is a change, in that recommendation. So just full transparency so the board knows exactly how they were scored.
Other comments at this point? Ms. Jones?
Well, it feels like we are having an emerging consensus and I just wanted to articulate that and agree with it, if I had it right, which is that let's keep it simple and have Dr. Cog staff do all the scoring and that we would have a review panel after that, which is composed of a staff person from, nominated from each sub-region as well as a handful of subject matter experts and that Dr. Cog staff are going to make recommendations on the latter.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Ms. Smith?
Just a clarification, in addition to the sub-regions, Dr. Cog and RTD and CDOT would be included on the review panel?
That's my understanding, yes.
Yeah. Ms. Christman?
This is very simplistic, but please make sure you have an odd number.
Great point.
Let's see if we can get some agreements on some parts. Ms. Smith, you have another?
I actually have a question. So, so a project's been submitted on, for the regional pod and it doesn't make it, it can be resubmitted in the sub-regional pod. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct. Stereo.
Okay. Let's take it one part at a time.
Mr. Dale?
So you've got a review panel and the review panel makes some decisions. Thanks. Just help me, bear with me on this. And then it goes to the TAC, to RTC, and then what do those two, what do those folks say? Yes, no, great, thumbs up, thumbs? I'm a little confused at what they're, those important folks are adding to the review panel.
Well, I mean, I can, yeah, I can definitely answer that. It's, well, yeah, I mean, it's definitely yes or no would be the answer. Yeah, so we would, so the Technical Advisory Committee, which is our Transportation Advisory Committee?
Transportation Advisory Committee.
God, you think I'd know after four and a half years? I just referred to it as TAC so long. But, so that's made up of technical staff, right, primarily of your jurisdictions. And so, yeah, so we will, and we've kept the TAC and quite frankly, RTC to a lesser degree and you all, of course, apprised of how this new model is transforming, right? So we will, at their next meetings, we'll talk to them about this whole process so they have an understanding of that. But yes, ultimately, each, well, the TAC is a recommending body, right? So they will provide a recommendation, yes or no, that they agree with the list. Regardless of that, we will then share that information with RTC and the board. Hopefully, they recommend approval of the list of regional projects and then RTC will then recommend projects to the full board. Now, it's different here than most areas with regards to what the purpose of RTC is. In order for any action, you know, related to a transportation initiative, right, within this region, NPO-related function, both RTC and the board have to have the same affirmative action. So if the RTC decides, "No, we don't like these list of projects, we're not recommending them," and the board says, "Yeah, we like them," well, that's not going to work. It has to go back to RTC and ultimately, we decide on a list of projects. That's a little inside baseball on how our process works, but, yeah, they're very important, all those important COGS in our process.
Mr. Brockett?
Can just get clarification. So the TAC is advisory and RTC is an approval body?
That's correct.
Yeah. So the diagram isn't structured that way right now, so you probably want to change it when you bring it back to the full board.
Yeah. It's a good point. I mean, we list RTC as a recommending body and they do ultimately, you know, their action they take is an actual recommendation to the board on an item, but with the understanding that if that recommendation is not approved exactly as it's stated by the board, then it has to go back through again.
Which I think counts as an approval body.
Yeah, it does.
Mr. Flynn?
Thank you, Doug. Could you clarify? Could the board eliminate one and pass the others or do we have to approve the recommendation from the RTC?
RTC.
As it's presented?
Correct.
Yes or no?
Or, yeah, if you eliminate one, then it'd have to go back to RTC.
Just that one?
Yeah.
Or the whole thing?
The package minus that one project.
Okay. Thank you.
But I think that the important part in the ultimate end, there has to be a unanimous agreement on the two sets, both from RTC and from the Dr. Cog board. It can't be a partial approval from either one. It's got to be unanimous across the board. All right. Let's go back one step. Under scoring, we've had a lot of conversation back and forth, but what I'm hearing, it appears, I could be wrong, that a majority of the folks are comfortable with having the Dr. Cog staff take care of both blocks under scoring and then forward that on. Am I in agreement with the group? See a whole lot of this, I don't see any of this. Okay. So for the time being, Ron, you own it.
Yep.
You and the rest of the group.
Yes.
All right. Now, under the review panel, we still have to get a decision, some kind of a way or another, of who's going to be on this review panel. Anybody want to take a quick shot at what that's, at least, go ahead.
I think we were reaching a consensus around each sub-region would nominate a representative, which would be a staff member from that jurisdiction. RTD and CDOT would have a place on the review panel and then there'd be a, quote, "handful of subject matter experts." of subject matter expertise, subject matter experts. And we had asked, I think Erin had suggested, having Dr. Cog's staff suggest who those might be.
Do we have any idea how many that would be?
A handful.
Okay, no, let's say no more than five? Can we limit? I'm trying to keep this down to a workable group. We're already up around 15.
Right. I think you raised the question, because you only have eight subregions, so I wouldn't think you'd want seven or less of all the others involved, because I think have that ownership through the review panel being within Dr. Cog, technically.
So, no more than five?
Yes.
No more than five subject matter experts, but let's go back to the other comment. If you are in multiple districts, do you get one? And do you, how do you make a decision on which district you're coming from when you're in multiple?
Well, yeah, that'd be up to the subregion to make that determination.
Now, what I'm saying is, I'll use myself an example. So, I have Adams and Jefferson. Do I get to choose which one I come forward with as part of this review panel?
So, Ms.
I think the point was that the same staff person shouldn't be from the single jurisdiction in two different subregions. So, each subregion would get to decide who their staff person would be, and just at the end of that process, they would, they can't all be from Westminster, is the bottom line.
So, I'm going to go back to this. So, Bob, you've got three that you have to deal with. So, does he have three different staff members? Or one staff member representing Aurora from all three subregions?
No, what I would, what I would, what my suggestion is, is that, you know, in Adams County, as an example, they might have somebody that's a stronger candidate than any of the Aurora staff. I can't imagine that's the case. Right, Matt Kalison, that kid couldn't be the case. But they might have a stronger candidate in Adams County, but Arapahoe County is a perfect fit for an Aurora staff member. So, I think that that's one of those, that there's got to be a little coordination, but I don't think the municipality would have the power to say, I want to be Adams County or Arapahoe County or Douglas, but that it's a, it's a, it's a fit based on who else is recommended within that subregion.
Ron?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I think my understanding of this concept is that each subregional forum as a group, and this will be your fir, this may be sort of one of your first subregional forum tests of how well you work together, is to come up with a recommendation from the membership from that subregional forum on who you want to be your staff representative, from the members of that subregional forum, to this review panel. And then, if Westminster's staff is the nominee from Jefferson County, you'll have to tell Arapahoe County, right, Arapahoe, Adams County, that, sorry.
I know Arapahoe wants to adopt this, but that's okay. We'll stick to that.
We, my staff member can't be the representative from the Adams County subregional forum.
Okay, that's good. I want to make sure. Mr. Dyak.
Yeah. So, I'm going to try and add, I mean, I truly believe that the subregion should, I think I articulated staff member, but after hearing, maybe just a person, a subject matter expert, which could go beyond the staff, which, to me, if that's the case, if we're opening it up to just non-staff as well, but appointed by the subregion, that may be, that may open the door to, to reduce the level of, that the handful of subject matter experts or eliminate, because at some point in time, we may get comfortable enough that each subregion then finds someone, a subject matter expert, that is not a staff, that can provide different perspective, because we're going to have staff at the TAC. So, to me, maybe, maybe just sort of limiting it to the subregion, plus RTD, plus CDOT, plus Dr. Cog, but opening it up greater to, to non-staff as well, if the subregion wants to nominate someone that truly has that expertise. I'll leave it to Director Jones to maybe provide some thoughts on that.
So, here's where I think we're at with this one. Right now, one person from each subregion. If you're in multiple subregions, that same person cannot be the one representing more than one region. Cast of characters of the eight, plus our three, RTD, Dr. Cog, CDOT, and up two, but no more than five, subject matter experts on any one area. Are we okay with that? I think I've got everybody covered. Okay. And then after that, it goes to the TAC for recommendation, it goes to RTC for approval, then it goes to Dr. Cog Board, which is us, for final approval, and if there's any disparity between RTC and Dr. Cog Board, it has to go back until we get a resolution and a unanimous agreement. Everybody okay? Ms. Jones?
I just wanted to.
Don't muddy the water.
No, I didn't. I wanted to respond to Director Dyak's point, which is, the subregions, we're assuming that they're going to nominate a staff person to the review committee. He's suggesting if they wanted to, they could recommend a subject matter expert who's not actually on staff. I don't have any problem with that. I think it's a subregional decision. The point is, we want subject matter experts on the review panel.
Yeah, and to your point, very valid with both of you, is that some municipalities may not have that staff person. And we know that's true, in some cases, they use outside contractors for that, and whether or not they want to pay additional funds for another contractor to be at meetings, that's up to them. Mr. Partridge?
So, clarification for review panel, the max number would be 13 members?
You got eight, three is 11, and five could be 16.
Oh, with Dr. Cog. We got.
It could be up to 16, depending on how many, because we said, no more than five. Doesn't mean you have to have five. So, you could have the odd number that you're talking about with Ms. Christman, but right now, you could have up to 16.
And that's what I'm wondering, do we want to have the subregions possibly outnumbered? That's what I was referring to earlier, maybe keep it so that it's total of seven outside entities and eight, no more than seven outside entities and eight subregion. So, that's what I was wondering, what would be the max number on the review panel?
So, then it's no more than four outside, because you'd have Dr. Cog, CDOT, RTC, so I'm fine with that. I, quite frankly, I think, you know, three is probably plenty from outside.
Sue, can I ask?
Go ahead.
Clarifying question, is Dr. Cog's role in the review panel going to be one of making, participating in the recommendations, or more of a facilitating role?
You know, if I may, yeah, I was thinking about that myself, and it's a good question, because we would already have provided our recommendation. So, the question is, is whether it was necessary for us to vote on any change. I guess I'd throw that back at you, what your desire would be for us to do, but I mean, we wouldn't have a problem with voting, I guess.
I wouldn't have a problem with it either, but I wonder if maybe it's cleaner to keep Dr. Cog's role in the scoring section, and then in the recommendations to keep to a facilitation role, and.
I like that.
Okay. So, then that gives you 15.
Yeah.
Okay. Is everybody all right? Last opportunity. Ms. Tholsman.
Early on, Director Brockett had talked about that the staff would come back at the next meeting with these alternate members as recommendations. So, we don't have to get to 15 if that's, if there's no need. It's just that if there are identified people, the staff will bring those forward, and we'll discuss them next time. But if it's, if it's fewer than that, that's acceptable. Thank you.
It just couldn't be any less than 11.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you all very much. It was helpful, a conversation for us.
All right. I hate to break up the party, but as soon as Mr. Graves is done, we'll be adjourned.
I'm not going to stand between you and a party, Mr. Chairman. I certainly won't do that.
Not a party, a dinner for those who have to stay.
Now that we've wrapped that up, just a couple of closing thoughts here. I think it would be great, now that we've sort of finalized the diagram, to have staff do the full visio with the decision boxes. So, if, for example, something is not approved by RTC, then what is the out? I think it'd be great, important to see that. It also dawned on me while we were going through this for the regional bucket, that clearly, across our subregions, each of us is going through this process internally with staff or our regional partners. And so, once we finalize by subregion, I think we should bring all of those models before the full body for a bit of an education session and also to learn from one another. And there may frankly also be some smoothing that we do at the subregional level that will lessen the burden on RTD and CDOT and other regional partners, who are submitting requests to each of the subregions in addition to the regional pod. So, just an idea for consideration.
I'd like to really consider adding two RTD people to every committee. Since they're not here to defend themselves, we'll make a decision by them not being here.
They're going to have to double their staff, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, well, they're going to try to do that anyway. But then we'd have the staff requirements for CDOT because they're present. And, all right, Doug, go ahead.
One last thing before you all leave. Don't forget, award celebration, April 25th. Please register. If you're having problems, please contact myself or Connie. I know there was a few people have some problems with the discount code or what have you, so please, please do that. There's still sponsorship opportunities if you're interested.
By table.
Connie says by a table. So, no, so please, everybody sign up. We got a pretty good crew so far, but we're hoping to make this bigger and better than last year. Thank you all.
We'd be very disappointed if every member of the Dr. Cog Board is not present at the gala. Somebody keeps picking on Dyak about how many tables he's buying. Ladies and gentlemen, travel safe going home. Those of you in the P and E Committee, we have a short break, and then we'll be joining the, Mr. Dyak and the chair up there.
Yeah. Can you believe that? Wow, that was nice, wasn't it?
Since I'm not on P and E.
Yeah, me too. And it's still daylight, I love it. Oh, it's so nice. All right, a safe trip.
Yeah. And then he's.
Yeah. And it's still daylight, I love it. Oh, it's so nice. All right, a safe trip.
Yeah. And then he's.
Yeah. And then he's.
Yeah.
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 Yeah.